Just like the ban on the importation of sacred materials, they just want to do something for both. And once they have given them a lot of opportunities, they will both have to be a normal help. So I am calling on all young people in this country to trust that the Excellency former President Mohammed is the one who can be trusted to deliver on all the promises that he has given to the people. President Kupwado was given an opportunity to try to implement eighty-five percent of all the promises he made to the Ghanaian people.
Okay, thank you very much. So I have been speaking to Goga Dancy. Goga Dancy is one of the key members of the party in the Asante region. Very shortly, I'll be speaking to Rex Oma. Rex Oma is in the entertainment industry. I've just spoken to him around. Be joining me shortly. If you look behind me, here are lots of people waiting and shortly for the start of the event. The town hall meeting will be taking place at the Great Hall here at the Kwame Kuma University of Science and Technology. Rex Oma will be joining me shortly. But I have a lot of people around and therefore let me speak to one of the members of the NDC. You are a parliamentary aspirant, isn't it?
Yes, for the Inshayesu Conciency.
For the Inshayesu Conciency. You are live on TV XYZ and Wazor TV. And this is just a conversation ahead of the main event, the town hall meeting which will be taking place there in the facility behind me. You've listened to the 2020 manifesto?
Yes, yes.
And some are already suggesting that government is in a hurry to implement some aspects captured in the manifesto to take away the signs. For you as a parliamentary aspirant, how do you see it? And does it suggest to you it is likely to water down the scripted book?
Not in any way. During my rounds, the people are telling us that, yes, when His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed came to them, they said, "I hear" and that is what he wants to implement. Now, this current government, the MPP government, they have been giving four years. What have they done? So whatever attack that is going on through the People's Manifesto, it's an attack on the intelligence of the good people of Ghana. So for them, whether they implement them or not, they are voting against the MPP. His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed has proven beyond reasonable doubt that leading a country is about their people. What they want is what they suggest.
Now, I'm even more excited because it is going to trigger a certain question with reference to what you just said about John Mohammed and his delivery record. The MPP and government, as we speak today, is on an agenda to suggest that John Mohammed doesn't have credibility. For you as a party official, a parliamentary aspirant, how do you respond to that tag they want to deliberately chip in after realizing that the incompetent man they so suggested has a track record he can boast of and now they are bringing credibility issues?
It has been the stock in trade of the MPP. Destroy, attack, destroy, tag, tag, that's what they will do because they have nothing good for the good people of Ghana. But you see, when His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed was given the opportunity, the things that he did are visible for all to see in this region, Asante region. The most popular thing he did from education, from market centers, let's talk of the KJCR project, they call it Dubai. It's a beautiful edifice. It's only His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed who can do this. When it comes to hospitals, we have Afari Hospital, we have Befai Hospital, we have Fominah and all that. When it comes to water, His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed gave the good people of Mampok. That is where my wife comes from. So my kids are from Mampok. Now they have quality water to drink. These are the things we are calling them to also come and showcase what they have done.
Asante region is the stronghold of the MPP. That as a region that has seen to the election of Nana Kupwado and the MPP into government, there should be something to boast about in the Asante region. Are you suggesting they have not done anything here?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, the MPP has taken the good people of Asante region for granted. We gave you all the votes for four years. They should just come and show us what they have done. I've just mentioned some of the things His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed has done for the good people of Asante region. And now what they are saying is that they deserve better. If not for anything, His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed has given them a lot of things they can boast of. In my conference, we have Broadway Park, a beautiful project that His Excellency John Dramani Mohammed has given to in Inshayesu. I'm just calling on the MPP. Come, show us. Maybe it's us who cannot see what you've done. Come, show us. We'll go look for them. Most of the projects in the tracker, the app for the tracker, they are not there.
Okay, so I'll stop you here because there are lots of people I want to engage. And this is the aspiring member of parliament for the NDC, for the Inshayesu Conciency. And this is TV XYZ and Wazor TV on Facebook and YouTube. And we assure you that lots and lots of conversations will come up shortly after this brief commercial break. Welcome back. This is TV XYZ and also Wazor TV on Facebook and YouTube. We are at the forecourt of the Great Hall of the Kwame Kuma University of Science and Technology where the Town Hall Meeting on NDC's 2020 Manifesto will take place this morning. I told you earlier, I've spoken to Rex Oma around. Here he is with me. Rex, how are you? It's been a long time and you look so very young. I remember when some of us were growing, we heard all your songs. But I see you here as some in the manifesto because of what has been captured that covers the entertainment industry generally. But within the last few weeks, you've come out with some songs and a number of things just to put the former president as somebody Ghanaians can trust. What is pushing you to do that?
Thank you very much. I mean, as you know, the name of our manifesto is the People's Manifesto. Those political divides from MPP and NDC is created. Everybody is happy with what the People's Manifesto provides, especially to setting up a standalone ministry that will take care of the creative, cultural and digital economy. I mean, everybody is very, very happy. President John Mohammed has a track record. So when he promises to do something, I mean, nobody is doubting it. Even the doubting some others, they hide behind the scenes and say, "Chalais, the first year is best." Now, if you look at most of the things that have happened, 2015, all the promises he has not been able to fulfill one. Even here in Asante region, they claim they are building auto morgue, theater center. We just went there, there is nothing of that nature. But President Mohammed did not promise anybody Kumasi City Market, he's guilty. The expansion of airport, he did it. So when he promises that when it comes, he will do this and that, everybody believes it.
So your decision openly throws support for John Mohammed is about the confidence, the trust and the credibility he has?
Exactly. When people say with the 10 billion big push, how is he going to get the money? When he was in power, all the developmental projects, industrial projects, you see, he spent 6 billion. This money is looking for the 10 billion for the big push. If you convert 10 billion, it's 6 billion. He has just over three years.
Okay, so let's continue the conversation. You may find a lot of people around us who are trying to catch a glimpse of what is going on. At the background, just ahead of me, at the background, just ahead of me, you can see people drumming and dancing, I hear the typical bobo song. You are an entertainment person. There seems to be some excitement around this 2020 election and NDC seems to be in a comfortable lead from how you hear people speak about policy issues and promises made.
The other time I said that the difference between the NDC's People's Manifesto and the MPP's Manifesto is the comparison that El Lambogini and Aboboya, the difference is huge. The NDC's Manifesto is a voice of the people, the People's Manifesto. That is why people can relate to it. That is why they themselves are even start to implement our manifesto. So if you're implementing our manifesto, then why don't you gather?
How do you react? And this is briefly, how do you react to those who are saying, "Oh, NDC is just making promises"?
They have nothing to say because, but the question of them asking us, "Ganedi", we have done it before. This 200e block, it was not in our 2012 manifesto. We came to power, the Mohammed said that he would do it, and by the time we are leaving power, he has done over 40 things. And 80 was in different stages of completing. So somebody who did not promise and have done, compared to somebody who has promised and have done, have not done anything, who should we believe? MPP has a track record on lying and lying and lying and starting believing in their lies. That's what they did to us in 2015. This time we are not going to allow them to lie and lie and lie. So they should come. We are in Asante region, I'm daring MPP. After borrowing 20 billion dollars, they should show us a single infrastructural project that they've done in Asante region that they claim is their stronghold.
Before you go, what is your expectation on the former president's promise to build NAPD into a higher training institution to build the capacity of people in your industry?
He has put it under the infrastructure. MPP has never built any public university in this country. President Mohammed has built universities, the one that is the voter region and the University of Environment and Social Development and all that. Somebody who has done it before, if he says, "I'll do it again," it is much more believable than somebody who has never done it and keep promising that, "I will, I will." I mean, we have less than three months to election and now Kupwado going around cutting sauce. And all social development and all that. Somebody who has done it before, if he says, "I'll do it again," it is much more believable than somebody who has never done it and keep promising that, "I will, I will." I mean, we have less than three months to election and now Kupwado going around cutting sauce. 2015, John Mohammed, have you forgotten that we were calling him Commissioner General? So Commissioner General has to compare to shortcut general, who should we believe?
Okay, thank you very much. So you just heard Rex Oma, he is a well-known entertainment person in this country. He's spoken to some issues. What I think from the conversation I've had with him is that former President John Mohammed has a track record, he's a nation builder, he can be trusted and Ghanaians should give their vote to him. If you look behind him, there are lots of people waiting for the arrival of the dignitaries before the commencement of the Town Hall Meeting on the 2020 elections. And then around, I can assure you that security is very tight because the 19 protocols have been carefully taken care of in the main halls. I have with me a beautiful lady who has also joined us obviously to be part of this Town Hall Meeting. Madam, you are welcome this live on TV XYZ and Wazor TV. What excites you about the 2020 election?
About the youth employment, I think it will create a sustainable employment for the youth like my type. So that excites me about the 2020 manifesto, the People's Manifesto.
Okay, a lot of people have been saying all kinds of things about the former president, some insulting him, some saying he's incompetent, some suggest that he cannot do it because he doesn't have the credibility. You are a young lady, you have followed politics maybe for a number of years, but I believe that you have seen them all. What makes John Mohammed stand tall among the other candidates?
Oh, what makes him stand tall is I think he has done a lot for the previous years that he was in power. In Kumasi here like this, like the KJCR markets, the Afari government hospital, military hospital, a lot are roads here, he has done a lot for it. So I trust and hope that based on this manifesto, he can do a lot.
Well, so this young lady, I'm trying to see her opinion about what is happening around the talk in town, what she monitors on social media. And she's getting us an impression that she appreciates the discourse that is ongoing. I will finish with you, but before you go, assuming that you engage your peers, what would you be telling them about the NDC manifesto to the extent that you think it has a good message for young people in this country?
Oh, like the 10 billion dollar big push. I think he can do it. He has done a lot and I've seen a lot, even in Kumasi here, he has done a lot that I trust and then hope that John Dramani Mohammed will do a lot for us. Like the schools he has built, the KJCR markets, roads, I trust he can do a lot for us.
So thank you very much. So you heard this young lady and I took her through a little examination and it gives you the impression that a lot of people, either young or old, are following the 2020 election, what the political parties are saying, what they are showcasing before the public and most especially what they need to take out from it. I have with me a specifically challenged gentleman. I remember when we followed the former president to the Upper West Region, a number of them came around him and I could see the passion with which he related to them and even walked to them and gave them some assurance. You have followed John Mohammed. You may have read parts of the manifesto or heard the conversation. I know the Braille version is available for you. If you look at the 2020 manifesto, what is in there for you that gives you the hope?
First of all, my name is Afus Katsaw, born and bred in Fabre and an ethnic of Upper West Region.
Yeah, so you can go ahead with the issues.
No, um, uh, the accounts we see that if the old edition have no problem, there wouldn't have been new editions. Um, we've been coupling with our common fund issues because, um, the social welfare people are brought in and moved in and day out, we've been seated. So if President John Mohammed said he is going to make a tracce of our own funds, we welcome it. It's a plus because, um, the old arrangements have been thrown overboard. And now a directive has been issued and it is a directive they are working with, no problem. If we really look at the distribution, they said, um, education, they should give 10% of the disability common fund to education, 10% to medical, 10% to business. If we should go around and look at the percentages, you realize they don't even tell it. In my municipal, for instance, health, the percentage they gave to health on 2018 is less than 6%. So as a result, a lady known as Wan maybe died as a result of it.
So you are suggesting that the caping of the allocation for people living with disability is affecting almost all the sectors where the money is expended?
Very well, yes. So if, uh, the business, imagine maybe I can make soup or I can weave and say, the money is given to me, maybe thousands of dollars or something is given to me to weave and say or make soup. I make my soup nowhere to be sold.
So in?
President John Mohammed has made us to understand that. After having made entrance?
Listen to the camera so you can turn this way, yes, and then talk, yes.
Yes, President Mohammed has made us to understand that. Um, he has, after having given, making a tracce of our old funds, he has also given us a mod to sell our rice, our wares, our stock rice and water food so that they can probably to see what, um, we are doing. And as well, they will employ these polytechnic students for us to come and brand our wares for us. So when maybe I make my soup and I send it to one city with a branding, it can be sold at 10 cities or 15 cities. Imagine there.
Also, in?
The amount of money that will drive?
I have a lot of people to talk to. So unfortunately, I have to end this conversation with a brief question. Now, you have colleagues, you have an association. In 30 seconds, if perhaps that will be enough, what would you tell them even as we prepare to listen to what is in there at the Town Hall Meeting?
Okay, if you are a student that is yet to go to university, do this, I mean, express disability information. President John Mohammed is saying that he's not going to say pay half fee, he is going to exempt you from paying school fees. Look, when we're in the university, we pay our guide. When somebody wants to help you to lecture holiday, you might get him food, but you still pay fee, pay for accommodation and water food. So if the fee is exempted, imagine the interest, the happiness involved.
Okay, so thank you very much. Um, we are so grateful and I just spoke to a specifically a gentleman who has expressed a lot of excitement, especially in the decision to allow them to manage their own funds, i.e. what is paid to the disassemblies for the investment to people living with disabilities. Today, TV XYZ and Wazor TV cameras went to town. We wanted to have a feel of how people of Kumasi are receiving, some people out there to create the excitement ahead of the build-up for the Town Hall Meeting. Very shortly, I will ask you to wait and we can watch some of the video. Um, I see National Concern Small Scale Miners Association of Ghana. Very shortly, the former president will arrive here and we can assure you that as soon as he arrives, we'll move on to the main hall and we'll give you the continuation of the live coverage of the People's Manifesto, the Town Hall Meeting here in Kumasi and is taking place at the Kwame Kuma University of Science and Technology, the Great Hall to be precise. National Concern Small Scale Miners Association. When we talk about small scale miners, we hear thieves, excavators, we hear people whose jobs were deliberately or taken away from them because there were conversations that the concessions that were taken away from you, people still had opportunities to go and mine. There were arrests and releases, some of your members are asked to stick out in jail. Now, speak to me, the former president has made specific commitments. One, you have field equipment, giving you back your allocations, ensuring that you engage in responsible mining so that we can protect the environment. How do you respond to what is in the manifesto and what makes you believe in it?
Uh, we only thank him because we are shown that he's an honest person. Why? Because we had an engagement with him. We made him understand the problems we were facing and he assured us that he would also make sure in his manifesto he will address it in a comprehensive manner. And he has surely done that to perfection. And we are only praying and hoping that whatever he has said in his manifesto, we would also pray for him, we will support him and we will make sure that come December 7th, all small scale miners who are in this country will rally behind the former president.
Now, so beyond what you have just told us, we hear some of your members are being harassed here and there and others are being cowed. As we speak, what is the conversation? Because normally, many people will react to the fact that because the NDC manifesto seems to be addressing his bottleneck, government is taking a U10 to speak to you.
Uh, my brother, um, we have had engagements with them ago, but through our dismay in their manifesto, they never mentioned anything on the small scale mining sector. You know, small scale mining contributes 48% of the total production of gold in this country. So if we are talking about gold or mining in this country, it's not a small sector. Before 2015, His Excellency Nandu came to promise all miners that was coming to empower the youth, that is the miners, for us to benefit from his, uh, uh, what?
The enabling environment is going to create?
He's going to create the enabling environment for us to flourish. But we all understood and now we all see what he has done to the small scale mining sector.
How angry are you?
My brother, as I speak with you now, my excavator is diseased. My brother, he has excavator, we can't even take where these machines are. Our president, a lot of our licenses, you know, when they give you a license for five years, he blames a man on us for almost two years now as we speak. Now, a lot of the licenses have a side. You went there for the mining regulations, he says that, um, it is stated in the mining laws that if your license is expired, the government have the right to renew your license for you. But as we speak now, all these expired licenses, government is saying they are not going to renew this licenses to us. And unfortunately, our licenses have been taken to the people we believe they are MPPs. So you know, small scale mining, it's not only for a particular political party for Ghanaians and it is stated in the constitution that, uh, as a Ghanaians who is above 18 years, you can engage in it.
Okay, unfortunately, we cannot continue this conversation, but I can assure our viewers that very, very shortly, the former president and his entourage will arrive here and the event will start inside the main hall of the Great Hall here at the Kwame Kuma University of Science and Technology. I have been speaking to the Small Scale Miners Association. I want to thank you very much. I believe that when the event starts, you have the opportunity to speak to more of the issues. I just want you to gauge the euphoria in town before we came back here. Just watch.
The average human body mass should have at least 60% water for optimal performance in any physical or mental exercise. We can help you maintain it naturally.
Ex natural mineral water, simply natural.